At this time, I'll entertain a motion if the approved agenda is presented.
I still have a motion if we approve this agenda.
Yes, sir. We move to second. Any discussion? If no discussion, I'm in favor of the motion. Raise your hand. I'll oppose likewise. Motion carries. We have a consent agenda, consent agenda for December police reports required upon expenses, minutes of December 17th program meeting, closed session, and embolsomement CJN utilities. I'll entertain a motion if we do a consent agenda on these items.
I'll make a motion if we do a consent agenda on these items.
You second?
I'll second.
Moving to second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Item C, the CJ utilities, that will be a reimbursement from Sue's?
Yes. We take what you do with.
I was just making sure everybody was on the same page.
Any other discussion? If not, I'm in favor of the motion. Raise your hand. I'll oppose likewise. Motion carries. Everyone sign up for public opinion, Bobby. Any old business we need to attend? Any further old business comments? If not, we move out into new business. The plan is on and updates. Jill, there.
Tonight, I want to talk to you a little bit about code enforcement program and the what issues that Dennis has been working with for code enforcement. I don't know if you can say something. I want to update you on the downtown area first. Letters went out giving those that are in violation until January 15th to come into compliance. We've got them out. This is not all those sheets that are in front of you, but I wanted to give you an update on what those violations have been outstanding before the amendments to our ordinance with the downtown overlay district. Dennis, I spoke with him and he has talked with the new property owners for Tim Matthews property that had been cited with the carport shelter and the fence area, and he will be meeting with them. I think he plans to meet with them sometime this week to discuss those issues. And concerning the signs on the side of the building, on the brick building on the corner of Main and Liberty Street, Dennis has a meeting set up this week. It's this Wednesday.
Main is car, or Main and Liberty?
Main and Carter. Main and Carter, I'm sorry. Carter. That he'll be meeting with Tim this week to measure all the signs that are on that building and to determine what needs to be removed in order to bring those signs into compliance. So he's going to be working on that. He also has talked with Johnny Luck and explained what he needs to do in order to bring his there is, he uses a storage trailer in behind his business, and he's talked with him and he has explained to him what he needs to do. So he's working with all those issues that have been brought forward. He has also worked with the issue of the RV that was discussed. And he is, has received a letter. And he and I have given one tonight that Dennis has written to you because he has been, he has, Randy Cox has asked him for an extension, asked the board to consider an extension for him through to April 15th. And so if you'll take a minute and read that letter that Dennis has written you on front of what we've discussed out, and I think the board needs to discuss this issue.
I'm calling on this letter to be that this is not something that's just became an issue, and I think we continue with the process that we have already in place and move forward.
What's the pleasure of this vote? Can we discuss it? On this letter?
Yeah.
Well, he's going to be excused, but you excuse yourself. So you have a letter before you, Dennis Penix, where Mr. Cox has requested until April 15th to move his camper. What's the pleasure of this vote?
I make a motion that we move forward with what we already have and disregard this letter for code enforcement.
I second that motion.
Move to second. Any discussion?
Violation of the town ordinance has been going on for over three years, and this is not something that's new. And I feel like that as a board, we're held to a higher standard, and if this was anybody else, I think that we would already have moved on.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Being defense has been going on for three years. It's nothing new to us. We turn this over to Dennis for, to address these issues. Dennis, that's code enforcement, has addressed these issues. He make a recommendation. I think as long as Dennis is making a recommendation and the client or whoever is in agreement with it, understanding and stuff that maybe we should consider Dennis' recommendation. It's gotten to April 15th. April, it gives a deadline. And then if it's not bothered to code then, then the board take other action. But it was turned over to code enforcement, and this is a letter from him with recommendation.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to make one comment on that. If you read the letter, he is leaving that for you to create that extension. So it wasn't him. So just to make sure that's clear.
When was this turned over to the code enforcement officer? Does anybody remember what month it was turned over?
We began working with this in August.
So this has been an issue since August, and the tenant, for lack of a better word, was a part of that?
Yes. However, when at that time, it was decided, I spoke with the code enforcement officer, and it was decided because here were other violations in the downtown area that had, a stay had been placed on those, that we chose to look at that same violation. It was the existing violation, and we chose to handle it in the same manner that we were handling the other cases.
How long does our code enforcement officer, been our code enforcement officer? Two years?
At least two years.
Okay, and why was this not addressed sooner? If the tenant has been in the property for three years, our code enforcement officer has been our code enforcement officer for two years, and it's not addressed until August of 2018, it appears that our code enforcement officer failed to do what he was supposed to do for two years.
He only works the whole complaint. He works that complaint. He doesn't come in and...
Well, we're moving forward with the other complaints in the downtown overlay. So I think we need to add this one to those other complaints and move forward.
And I think there was a lot of confusion on which way Dennis was going to move and stuff, because if you, if you remember, there was a lot of confusion going on with the planning and zoning board at that time with recommendations and stuff. Our planning and zoning board was in uproar at that point. So that might have played a part.
In the meantime?
In the time, because no decisions were being made because so much stuff was going on. And I don't know at that point if we had it full board or what when this first started.
It's my understanding that the code enforcement officer goes out and checks, he inspects property once he's been given a written request from the clerk or from the mayor, but from the administration office.
I will say, Jill, he comes directly from Bobby now, not all of them.
Okay. Well, I know that it comes from, the administration office accepts a complaint, and Bobby forwards that on to him, and that's when he goes out. So if he hadn't, now, that's my understanding in the time I've been here in the last six months. So he goes out on them when he receives them. But I don't know how things handled, were handled beforehand.
Any other discussion? If not, we have a motion on the floor to have this property abated without any consideration for the April 15th deadline. All in favor of that motion? Raise your hand. All opposed likewise. Two people will go along with abating now. Two will go along with moving on time. My decision would be due to circumstances to give them until April 15th to abate the property.
Does that mean we're giving everybody else until April 15?
I'm sorry?
Does that mean we're giving everybody else until April 15?
No, ma'am. This is a case by case deal. He has requested to the code enforcement officer. No one else has requested. Am I correct? Bobby?
Except the next case, which is not downtown overlay, but the next case is concerning Jimmy Brown. And that, Dennis has set a meeting with Mr. Brown on Wednesday to discuss that situation. The cars have not all been removed. They, some have been moved up around the adjacent residence, but Dennis is going to work with him. And it was my understanding, he told me that he was going to be giving him 48 hours to remove the cars from the property and around the house. So, but he's going to be working with that on Wednesday. And that is a case that has been given also. But he's also working with a violation on Stout Street he received. And he's scheduled a meeting on Wednesday morning to meet with that person also. That person is contending that the vehicles are not junk vehicles. It's a junk vehicle situation. And so he will be meeting with him on Wednesday morning. But all those cases, you should be receiving updates in the future on each one of them. They are still currently, he is working with those situations.
Jill, I might ask you a question you might not know right off. I know it's been some time, but I don't know. How long have we been working on the Brown situation? How many stays and stuff have we given him? Do you know about how long a period of time we've been working?
I believe, I think Bobby could probably answer that better than I can. I know that it's been...
It's about two years ago. It's been almost two years ago.
So I don't, I don't know, but I do know that it's been some time. I want to say March or April of 2016 or '17. But that's also gone through several stages. If you will flip to the second sheet that we have there. It's showing things that have been turned over for, that code enforcement has worked through, and these are the cases that he says he has turned over to the town. I spoke with him today. He said that first one there, 105 Weatherly Square, that the property, the property has been vacated. The 2022 Brooklyn Avenue has a new owner now. It's been going through the process for a little while, but it had, the ownership changed when it got close to the end of code enforcement. It, he had sold the property. It had gotten to the point though where Ramso, where I believe, were you involved in that man?
I went out and met someone to clean the property up and got a price, and we were getting ready to move forward with it, and they sold the property in the process.
Right. But Dennis worked with the new property owner and the junk cleared up. And I believe at that first time anyway, they did mow the property because there was some grass, high grass situation also. However, he said that there are still minimum housing violations that are still a problem, and he's working on it, but he's required by law to give this property owner 90 days. Is what he is giving, he's claiming is what the situation is with that particular residence. So I do know that he's also working on another situation. Well, let me skip to that one. I'll go to the 1209 Liberty Street.
Lyman.
Lyman Street, I'm sorry. It's a stiller violation, and so that's a situation that he's turned over to the board to make a decision on. I'm not asking you to make a motion on this particular one because there's a couple more cases that you need to consider. The vacant lots on King Road, there are two. One's behind Bojangles, one's beside of it. He said the one in the rear has been taken care of. However, the one to the side has And then 2001 Craven Street, the, he has been working with that owner. They contracted with someone to remove the, or to demo the house, the residence, and they have been waiting. There's been some things going on here. In September, on September the 19th, they completed the asbestos report because that was required to be done before any demolition could take place on the property. And they have said that they have contracted with a contractor to complete it, but I spoke with Dennis today, and I've also spoken with Bobby, and she has sent a request to the property owner to have the contractor give her a date as to when it will be taken down. And so we're kind of waiting on that one also. And then 2043 Brooklyn Avenue, there was a situation there where the code enforcement officer, it's an RV situation, where he thinks someone is using the property. He received the complaint that someone was using an RV there for residents. He plans to re-inspect the property on Wednesday. He has already sent out violation notices to this property, and they were supposed to have brought it into compliance by the first of this month. He is going to re-inspect it this Wednesday, and he, he will be scheduling a hearing this month for the property owner to appear before him here in this, in this building. And if he's not able to work it out at that point, then he's going to turn it over to the town for abatement. He's going to turn it back over to you for abatement. So that is basically where we are. But there is the situation of Limonberry Street and also the vacant lot beside Bojangles that both of them need to be considered. What the board wants to do.
Is that they're next to Bojangles and the other lot? Are they owned by the same two people?
I don't know. I assume they are based on the way that he has sent me the notice. I called him today to...
Is it the one on the back side of Bojangles?
No, that one's in compliance now, but the one to the side of Bojangles, he says...
But the one behind it is the one we're talking about, behind Bojangles?
She's asking if both of those lots are owned by the same people.
Right. That one lot behind Bojangles is owned by Bojangles. It's vacant. And they did a subdivision, and they own that, like, it's like a triangular piece of there behind it. And then the other one is the family.
The one behind, okay.
I go by that twice, at least twice a day.
So then, one Bojangles is not in compliance now, apparently, and the other one is in compliance?
No.
Neither one are in compliance. Danny's saying the one behind Bojangles is not in compliance as of today.
No.
But Dennis on his last report said it was.
We're not going to lock the room.
No, no, it hasn't been bush-hauled. It was supposed to have been bush-hauled back in early spring, and it hasn't been touched. Dennis has looked at that ever since Bojangles first opened up.
Well, I talked with him today, and he said that the one to the side is not, and one in the rear is okay.
He's got it right reversed.
But it's the reverse, is what you're saying?
The male building has been abated. I mean, the grass has been mowed there.
Okay.
The property behind Bojangles has not been taken care of.
Okay.
He's just got it reversed.
Well, then, that is the piece of property, and the Limonberry is the piece of property that is up tonight for the board to determine where we go from here with this.
Jill?
Yes, sir.
Would you please separate those two for us to vote together? I'm asking for, for, to be excused from voting on 1209 Library Street for personal reasons.
Okay.
Is that how I say it, or...
You feel like you have conflict?
It would be, yes.
Or it could be a conflict.
It could be, it could be a conflict.
Okay.
Is that, does the board have permission to the board to separate those?
I'm very little bit.
Excuse from voting on 1209 Library Street. I want them separate, please.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, so let's look at 1209 Library Street.
I need to mute myself from voting on this.
The board will vote to approve.
We have voted to approve me to be excused from voting on 1209 Library Street.
Do we need to make a motion on it?
I still have a motion if we, uh...
Excuse, Mr. Voting on 1209 Library Street is a second.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'm in favor of the motion. Raise your hand. I'll oppose likewise. You've been excused from voting, sir. What's the pleasure of voting on 1209 Library Street?
I'm in favor. Is this the house on the end down at...
Next to the last house.
Okay.
It's, yeah. It used to be owned by, I believe, Mr. Voting, but my statement is that the house...
Yeah, it was sold, and then the people that left, it was, it's all the ones that had the possession, I suppose.
I don't know what our options are.
That's what I...
Okay, what would happen from this point if the board decided that they wanted, that you want to move forward with taking care of this violation? And this is when you're turning it over to your attorney to begin procedures in court. I think his first step would be that he would send a letter and give them a period of time to rectify the situation, and if it is not at that point in time, we'd ask Dennis to go right back by it to make sure that they had taken care of it or they had not. And if they did not, then he would move forward and he would file in court.
When you file it in court, is, what's the estimated cost in doing that?
Well, what you'd be doing is asking the court to find the homeowner in violation of your city ordinance or town ordinance and ask them to abate the issue.
And if there's any cost to it?
A lot of times, there's action on behalf of the homeowner after they get served. Lots of times, when you write a letter and tell them they're going to involve a lawsuit, they take care of some things. There's always a few that don't. And as the mayor, I think, was just, was noted by Jill, sometimes individuals will get on the ball and sell the property, and the new owner will come in and abate the problem. So I think sending the letter, do you want to authorize me to send a letter to the owner that if they don't clean up this property within a certain time frame, that the court will pursue all legal options, then they're under the gun, and the board doesn't have to take any further action. They can authorize the action if they don't comply by certain time frame.
What is the general timetable?
Well, we can do it by consensus to how the board, do it 30 days or...
Normally, what, what has happened is, is in a 30-day process, and if they don't, or, but the, it's completely up to the board. If the board wants to say 15 days or whatever number you want to, but 30 is usually standard.
Bob, I have a question for you. If, if the town occurs some cost behind this, and they don't rectify the prob, well, if the town occurs a cost to this, the property on this will be held liable, or else we can foreclose on the property.
You can, you can ask for attorney fees. Some of the statutes allow, some don't get the, look at the exact one that you're, they've got a nuisance statute that came out a couple years ago, where if you got individuals in violation three times in one year, it's three times in one year, then after you send them the notice, you can just go ahead and abate it and file a lien, make a, file a lien, file a register, file a lien against them.
I would think that would be the way the county would go in case they occur, they occur any cost on this, that they have a chance of recouping their money before this property could be sold or anything. And I think that could be a best route.
If you ever look at tax, the tax printout at the county, their software is not compatible to add on the liens that this county have. We discussed that with him in the link over several cities. And what they do is they type on the bottom of the tax printout, but the bill is, please check your local municipalities for liens or assessments or anything like that. It's printed on the bottom. Most people miss it, but it's on there. So if you ever look at a tax, your tax bill, or you print it off from, you look at it on a computer, it's printed on the very bottom telling anybody looking at that, they need to check the local municipality to see if any liens or assessments are hidden.
Do we know if this property is owned by an individual or if it's been, it's banked So we just know it's a man, and then we don't have the license?
The information that he's given me is not the names, and this particular, in this particular case, this, this happened. They began, he began working with them, my guess would be probably six or 30, or 90 days before they even hit this list, and these are some that are...
You just need to pull up the tax parcel numbers, who the owner is, to a quick update of the owner to see if they have de-trust, noticeable closure. If you see a substitution trust de-file, you got to find something.
And if, if the bank owns it, we can still force the bank to clean it up.
If it's a local bank, you can. If it's an out-of-state bank, they're, they're not going to do anything. I make a motion, we ask our attorney to proceed with writing the letter, and I make, in that motion...
That's quite a lot, and Library Street.
Do we need to, can we just go ahead and authorize them that if it's not taken care of in 30 days to proceed with legal action?
You can include that in the motion.
We have to break it before the board again?
Yeah, you can include that in the motion.
Yes, you can.
Okay, that's my motion. That go ahead and write the letter and proceed with legal action if it's not rectified in 30 days.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
You move to second. Any discussion? I would like to add that when we contracted with Dennis, he told me, and I thought Bobby, he does all his labor. When he gets to a point where the people won't comply, he turns it up to the town. Would we be willing to go to court to abate these properties? And it was said, yes. Otherwise, we're wasting our money with code enforcement, right? So we need to proceed with this, is my thinking. Any other discussion? If not, I'm in favor of the motion. Raise your hand. All opposed likewise. Motion carries. Now we'll go to the vacant lots on King Road.
Yes, sir.
Now, it's my understanding, but I've gone by that numerous times, that he got these two courses reversed. The one on the male building side has been abated. The property behind Bojangles has not been. I see it every day. And I see it every day. So I'll just fill that out for discussion.
But technically, that property is not abated because the building is standing open.
But the grass has been mowed.
So, did that.
This says high grass, as I was saying.
He's talking about grass. He's talking about grass.
He's on, something he's got there.
We're just going to be addressing the grass issue and not the building?
If the building is not secure, is that not a violation?
It is.
It's just the building that.
Family dog was going to go in.
Go in and then like merge and then been gathered, the building had stopped.
It's been there about three years now.
Well, I think with that building, I think that maybe we can sit down and look at that with Dennis in the next, before the next month's meeting.
Maybe you can make a recommendation.
And make a recommendation to the board on how to handle that particular structure that has fell in. Because that, that's a complicated issue. That has fell into, um, did it not go into bankruptcy?
Yes. Lots of them.
It's very, it's very complicated. I believe they, they have even donated it on to some other.
Yep.
To, um, uh.
Non-profit.
A nonprofit organization and it, it's, it's a very complicated issue. So as far as working with that, we need to look into that on a legal standpoint, a little harder than what we have.
We just got to build that building before that was a family building.
Yes.
In there. And then when they merged, it was a Dollar Tree.
Dollar Tree.
Dollar Tree.
They got that building, it was a pretty good building.
Then he found he didn't really have a tenant going in there. He just stopped.
Right. So we need to address the high grass tonight.
That, the lot with the high grass there on King Road.
So we've only addressed one high grass, so let's address this one.
I thought you said the high grass was mowed.
No, there are two lots there. One is one with the building and one's without the building.
And they're owned by the same.
No.
So we've already addressed the Bojangles one. I don't know, we have to address the.
That's the one that she's saying is out of compliance. The triangle piece behind Bojangles, right.
I'll make a motion that.
That's what, that's what the mayor is saying.
Danny is saying.
Yes, I'm, I'm just reading off this list of what he's.
I would like, I would like for you to make a correction if you need to call Dennis or whatever.
I can do that.
To make sure that he's talking about the property behind Bojangles, not the side of Bojangles, for high grass.
I will do that.
I know that's what he's talking about, but it's not what he says here. Therefore, I don't think the board can take any action on the high grass on that property till we make clarification.
Okay.
That makes sense.
So you want me to do that deciding or do you want to?
Can you call him now?
Yes, I can.
Call him.
You can bring me back at the end of the meeting.
We'll bring you back and give you a report.
Take care of that and we'll, we'll get to that at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
But, um, yes, I'll bring up more when that's over. I don't have any more cases before you, but I've got a few.
If you get, if you get to him, just raise your hand, say I'm ready.
Okay.
If we're into something else, alright? Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Danny, I did not give you the updated agenda. I'm supposed to be next, but I'll just like tell the mayor permission of offense.
Okay. Yeah, we didn't approve it.
Uh, water sewer expenses, Commissioner Chief.
Uh, right now, I don't have anything. I'm waiting on an estimate to come in for, um, our sewer plant. Uh, they have some issues down there. Um, I should know something before the end of the week and I'll send. Uh, and as soon as I get my hands on it, I will forward it all to the commissioners.
Grant, Dale.
Oh, Dale, yeah, we need to deal about the generator. We're sort of in a sticky situation because the military generators, you only have certain people that can work on them and doing this stuff. He's requiring seventy-five percent upfront and the other twenty-five at the end. And I told him I did not have the power to approve that. The board would have to approve that. So I'd like to know what the board want to do.
He's requesting seventy-five percent in a cashier's check.
Uh, how much, how much is that total?
About fifteen thousand dollars.
Seventeen seven.
Is that up with the trading in the generator?
No, it's going to be more because we're keeping the.
It's three thousand dollars more because we're keeping the old generator. Uh, Bobby sent out an email and I think Adam responded. I called David and stuff and I agree. So we're going to keep the generator and at a later date have it redone because we, we could have two generators for twenty-one thousand where we're paying seventeen for one in case we have a problem with another one later. So it would be about fifteen thousand dollars he want upfront in a cashier's check.
Is that in the budget or do we need to?
I mean, it's in the budget. I mean, we've already approved the invoice. We're just wanting y'all to say it's okay to give him seventy-five percent upfront.
I don't see where we have a choice, so.
Well, he didn't want to make a decision without y'all.
It's a regular, it's a kind of rectable contractor.
Yeah, we've used them for years.
I think they're the only ones in the area that do it.
Yeah, the military old generators.
I'll make that motion that we send them seventy-five percent in a certain kind of check.
I'll second it.
Move to the second, we expand seventy-five percent of the price of the generators. Any further discussion? If not, I'll put a motion, raise your hand. I'll put a lifeline, motion carries. Do you have anything else on water sewer?
No. Uh, street department, they did start filling the potholes today around town and they will finish up tomorrow, getting rest of them. Uh, yeah, that, that may be done tomorrow. Uh, they did, uh, they did about four different places.
I was just wondering if that was us or that was the state?
No, uh, we're doing it because we cut it because we had a water leak, so we're replacing it with, uh, that old.
You're talking about which way to the line?
Yeah.
Or the concrete in and then after that part?
That's all I have.
Cemetery and Library, Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, over at the cemetery, I think there was another ground wire that was broken that runs to the lights, the accent lighting on the columns. Um, let me send someone out there to check it out tomorrow, but while they're repairing the side of the wall, I think maybe, maybe the wire got nicked because the lights are just tripping. So other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
Uh, Parks and Recreation, I like Commissioner Fabel.
Okay, um, I think the last month we talked about ball, rectable, um, and Commissioner Chief was requesting some information on our insurance. Um, I did find out that our town's liability insurance does not cover sports-related activities. I've talked with several insurance companies that can cover this. I've met with the, um, Parks and Rec in Ashboro where they had their meeting and they provided me an insurance company. And I think, um, you all should have a copy of that. So it looks like there's a couple of things that I'm going to request. One is that we go ahead and approve the bringing ball into Ramstour. Two is the level of, um, insurance that we could cover for. And three, I've got, um, a rough draft of the City of Ashboro's registration form, which is an older form, a price on what it would cost for each child to register. So I'm going to start off with the insurance levels. I'm going to recommend that we cover each child and I think the cost is about ten dollars per child at a level of ten thousand dollars. Um, and that's for baseball. And if you go to, it's a six-month, a maximum of six-month policy. And if you go down to the ten thousand dollars and it's by ages there. So kids nine and under, if I'm reading this correct, is six dollars and sixty cents for the primary or the access is three, three-ten. I'd say we go with the primary ages ten to twelve, it's ten eighty-five. We can add that into the registration cost. So with the registration cost, I'm saying that we should go with approximately forty-five dollars per child. The registration is two hundred and seventy-five dollars per team. If we have ten children on each team, that's about twenty-eight dollars with, um, adding the insurance in at approximately ten dollars per child. And then maybe some uniforms, a shirt and a hat. I'm going to say that forty-five dollars per child should cover it. And I wanted to announce that we were approved for a three thousand dollar grant from DART for, to assist with, um, purchasing of equipment and some field maintenance. So first off, before I request the motion for the approval of the grant from DART, I'm going to bring a motion to allow Parks and Rec for ball, I guess, baseball at Leonard Field from the town of Ramstour.
I have a question before you become an insured, you don't understand this one. From your registration fee, you're going to pay the insurance.
Correct.
Okay, and the town will be a rider on those.
Well, however, the insurance is established in S. I think that's how they do it.
No, it would be its own policy and the town's covered on their liability.
Okay. That's the only question I had at this one.
Which one would she do, five thousand, ten thousand?
I'd like to do the ten thousand.
Ten thousand. That's not being medical, it's fifty. It's going to be seven, four, one, eighteen, eighty-five, twelve, three, twelve.
Wait a minute, we have to go to the last page for North Carolina. Ten thousand is seven seventy for ages nine and under and twelve seventy-five for ages ten to twelve.
I just want to cover it in the first place, because you said.
That's what I would like. Um, we have to establish that registration fee this evening so we can get it out there.
Forty-five, good one.
Much better than our forty, I think Franklinville last year ran seventy-five dollars per child, which was pretty high.
It's the excess of some of the policy or something. I see the, the primary is in there, it's next to us.
Can I ask a question? Are you saying, are you wanting to pay for this upfront and then recollect the money in registration fees? Or are you paying this after registration fees, uh, that?
It, it'll be after, I believe it's after once, because we have to have a number of children. So we, I mean, I've never done this before, so kind of.
It would be based on.
I'm relying on y'all to help me.
Yeah, it would be after because you need to know how many kids you're actually covering.
And, I mean, we may only get four teams or we may get eight teams, so it's all based on cost.
Are you making this a motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, hold on. Let's, let's, what is the motion? So she motioned to approve ball in Ramstour first, and nobody said.
That's all she said, but she made a motion to approve ball at Ramstour.
Insurance.
So we'll, we'll address the insurance level. Right now, you want to prove it for ball in Ramstour.
That's right.
If we move to the second, that we approve ball, baseball in Ramstour.
Correct.
You're not going to include, is there? Hold on a minute. Yeah, motion and a second on the floor, correct? Is there any further discussion on having baseball in Ramstour?
Is that the all same charge?
Discuss that. I would like to discuss.
Okay.
Um, as far as the concessions and things like that, who will be in charge of that and the money is collected for that? And how will they be taken and accounted for? Even, are they going to be, um, charges for admissions and things like that and who would be in charge of collecting that money and turning it in?
Um, there's, there may be, they haven't decided yet that there may be a charge for the initial preseason game and maybe if there is a postseason game tournament. However, the regular games, there is no gate. The concessions will be manned by parents and volunteers, coaches. The money will all be turned over to the town. That there's going to have to be a level of trust as to, we're going to have to expect that our coaches and volunteers are going to turn over everything. I understand that there's always an opportunity for somebody to slide a dollar or two into their pocket.
The concessions before, when I used to have them, that we would have a list and we would just mark out things that we sold to keep up with inventory. That kind of.
And the other, the other question I have is are we going to use that money to reimburse the concession stand or are we going to have to do it out of a line item each time? You tell me what's easiest. I mean, I, God, do you have any ideas?
Yeah, that's really the way you would want it to work to where you just.
That's the easiest thing?
Take care of itself.
That's the easiest thing. However, you need to have some kind of level of what you're spending out receipts so that when the auditors come back and we put in, we can show where it's going. And I will have to do a budget amendment, not really amendment, but add a line item for the ball for revenue.
Do you have to have two, one for registration and one for concessions?
No, it would just be like the lake. You know how we have the one revenue line item? We don't have a line item like that at the ball field. So you just need to put that in there and we'll just establish an amount of how much you think you'll bring in and then you have a line item of what you think we'll spend out, like your initial concession stand costs. We can say that and then put your, um, revenue at that same amount. That way you've got something and we show it in the budget come for audit next year. And then we'll just, that line item will be what you spend out of.
Okay.
Bob was wanting no age limits.
What, what, when you say play ball, are you going to go to twelve and under or are you doing the pony league or?
It, it is pony league. Um, I do have a little book here. Anybody wants to look at it? This is a two thousand and sixteen book and let me see if I can find my notes.
May I?
Yes. Um, we had talked about six and under, eight and under, and I think ten and under.
Yeah, we were going to do the older kids this first time around.
Right.
Reason I was asking, I look at your interest rate. They should get older, they go.
Yeah.
It goes up, right?
Ball teams are going a little fast.
I think we had decided that, um, the middle schoolers, most of them are going to be with their school ball, so we may not get.
I just wanted you to clarify your motion, so it's specific, is what kind of ball we're doing there?
I have a question, um, and I don't know, I'm just asking. Is there going to be a price difference for in-town and out-of-town for our kids to stay here versus someone that doesn't live in our area within our tax base?
I, I don't think so. It's not my intention to do that. They're going to go by schools. So every child that attends Ramstour School will be in Ramstour. They had, now have different divisions. I believe they're bringing Grace Chapel in, which leaves Grace Chapel, Colridge, Liberty. So we'll have a division on the east half where we'll be playing each other and we rotate fields. So everybody's going to have an opportunity to play everywhere.
No, I, I really feel personally that that should be the same for everyone because we don't want, uh, you know, you run anybody off some.
Right. And, and, no, I was just asking.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? We have a motion on the floor to have. We have a motion on the floor to have baseball in Ramstour. And concessions, you want to put that in on your motion?
One at a, one at a time. She's doing baseball ten and under right now.
Well, she, I didn't hear you say ten and under. Ten and under. Is that okay with you?
Yes.
We have a motion on the floor to have baseball in Ramstour for ten and under. Any other discussion? Is there a second? Any other discussion? If not, I'll put a motion, raise your hand. I'll put a lifeline. Baseball's coming to Ramstour again. I hope we have more success this time than we have the last two times. Pleasure, ma'am.
Um, so then I think we were talking about setting the fee at forty-five dollars. So I'd like to make a motion that we set that registration fee at forty-five dollars.
No second? So motion and a second to set the registration fees for forty-five dollars. Any discussion?
Are you going to have multiple child differences or is it just forty-five?
Forty-five dollars.
As much as I'd like to have multiple child discount, I don't know that we are going to be able to afford it at that price.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll put a motion, raise your hand. I'll put a lifeline.
And then the third thing is I'd like to make a motion that we be able to accept the grant that we've been awarded from DART for three thousand dollars.
Equipment.
And it was entitled, um. And it was entitled, um, revitalization, rec ball revitalization. So I've asked for equipment and for, um, dirt for the ball fields.
We have a motion on the floor to set the three thousand dollars for DART, is there any...
A second?
Motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, I'll favor the motion, raise your hand, I'll oppose likewise, motion carries. Anything else?
I think that's all of it, unless y'all think of something else.
I have a question. If, if you have, uh, people that wanna make donations to this, um, what Ms. Hattler said, to, to, uh, like if a family has more than one child, it's a scholarship. Like you have a scholarship, or like if somebody has multiple kids, can somebody make a donation to that? And it just go for that or...
I think what, um, and I'm not sure, we have to work this out. I think what we're gonna do is, um, levels of sponsorship for the ball field and maybe part of that sponsorship money can go to, um, assisting a family that may have a need if they have more than one or two children that wanna play.
Some kids, some, some families can't even afford one.
But you, you're saying that somebody specified?
Somebody specified, you know, you know, donations could...
I'm always agreeable with making sure every child gets an opportunity at Blackheart.
You can't mean...
Uh, I'm gonna have to ask, have we, have you considered, uh, the Lake Ward job for next year yet? You know, this is January.
Yeah, I know it's January. Um, the Lake Ward from last year said he is interested in doing it again this year. Um, our Lake Committee has not met yet. I really wanted to get this ball out of the way before I went to the next adventure, so, so far we've done concerts and now we've done baseball, next is lake. So we should have an update for you. In February, the Ramsore Advisory Council does meet, I believe, January fourteenth.
I think so.
So we should have all areas meeting on the fourteenth. So we'll be able to give you another update in February.
Two questions. One, did you want to make a motion that your insurance, to accept the insurance, take, do the insurance policy with this registration piece? Because you didn't actually do anything on the insurance.
I made the motion that we pay for the insurance out of the registration fees.
I second it.
A second, any discussion? If not, I'll favor the motion, raise your hand, I'll oppose likewise.
Just wanna make sure that was covered.
Yeah. Thank you, Don.
Is there anything else?
We're gonna need to make a, on the concessions, we're gonna need to make a decision on that.
Not yet, they, that she can bring, she's got time to bring that back to you.
Don, do you know of anything else?
No, yeah, me.
I believe that's all I have.
Jill, we can call you back there, see if you have any information for us.
Mr. Sheen, please be excused for a moment. Um, after speaking with Dennis, got him on the boat, just gonna go, speaking with him. It is on the side of Bojangles, however, it's the east side of Bojangles. So it's on the Salar City side of Bojangles.
That would be the one owned by Bojangles.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. But, or is it subdivided? Yes.
That's between you and the, you just be...
He said there's a small lot to the rear of this that had been taken care of, somebody, he said, did weed some of it down, but there's, um, but the, the, um, lot to the east side running Highway sixty-four, um, is the lot that he is speaking of.
I stand to be corrected. I do know that that property is vacant too. All right.
Well, he has worked out both situations, so that's up to the board whether to continue with both of them or one of them. How the code enforcement has been done.
This way, Commissioner Spade, can I get your...
Okay. Um, I, to give you an update on one other, on a couple of other sides of it. Let me do this one that is, um...
Hold on one second, I hope he's coming back. If you will, please, ma'am.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll just take a moment down.
Tell him again about the east side of the property.
The law in question that is in violation is on the east side of Bojangles.
It's not the west side, it's the east side.
So I think... Not the one with the building, it's on the opposite side.
Okay.
And, um, so I guess the board can take some action.
What's the pleasure of the board on high grass on the east side of Bojangles?
I make a motion that we move forward the next step with this. Had Dennis exhausted all his...
Yes, sir.
I, I make a motion that we turn it over to, uh, our attorney to move forward with this.
A second?
A second.
A second, any further discussion?
One thing to say, are we gonna do it in the same manner as the first one? After thirty days, then he carries it on the court?
What I view is, when you come back, we'll send the letter out and then we'll report back to this board if we've heard any response.
Right.
If, of course, we haven't any response, we just move forward. If we've heard some response or somebody actually did something, that needs a big report.
Okay.
How's that?
You can put a next board, board then.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll favor the motion, raise your hand, I'll oppose likewise, motion carries. You said you have something else?
There is also, um, there was a complaint that was taken at five ninety-three Colridge Road of trash and junk. Um, he has gone out, he went out on the twenty-sixth day of December, investigated it. It was a violation. He has sent a notice and they have, he has given them fifteen days to comply. So in the next week, that should be taken care of. And also...
Jill, that is according to Pusher Road and twenty-two, correct?
It's at five ninety-three.
That's a, that's a...
It is, okay.
That's a corner lot going in, on Pusher Road, according to, it's been reported by some citizens, so thank you.
Yes, sir. And there is also the situation, um, at, um, two-one-two Holly Hill Street that was turned over to the town to have it mowed. And I believe the town is taking care of that. I assume by, by the notes that the code enforcement officer has written.
I don't know, I've never done that.
Okay. So can, um, Grant, can I ask you to check with him on that? Because wouldn't that be a public works issue if the town does do that?
Oh, no, when it, when it comes to high grass and stuff, if we have to contract it out, we contract it out outside of the town and the town pays them.
We, we got John Friday to do the last one.
Okay, so...
And then we just in turn charge the property owner for that.
How do we charge the property owner? We just send them a bill?
I make an invoice and they pay it.
They have a certain amount of time to pay it or else we could put a lien on the property.
How do we put a lien on the property just if they don't pay? Do we have to take them to a small place store?
Instead of where? We can rest the boat. You have anything else?
I think there's a little bit of disconnect between these issues that come in and how they're supposed to be handled and the code enforcement steps that should be taken on each one of these cases. And I do think that it's something this board should consider, and I'm not asking you to do that tonight, but I mean, I'm asking you to think about this. That this board consider letting either, letting me look into it, and I'll be glad to, to deal with and work with Dennis on this, but that there is setup where there is written procedural ways of handling in the process each one of these go through from each step that it, we go to next and next and next so that you're not asking those questions of, well, how do we take care of getting mowed? And how do we, how do we evade this? And what do we need to do next? Because I think we're all, it's not just the board, I don't know what. And, and I'm a little disconnected, him asking me if it's on the corner of the shee in twenty-two. I'm, I'm a little disconnected with, with code enforcement. So I think we need to work a little bit on bringing that together.
What expense would that be? Or a ballpark expense to have a, uh, procedure to run it? I mean, if you don't...
I mean, I would, I could probably work on it maybe in, in a day, so we talk about. It might cost the town a couple hundred bucks.
I have another question for you.
Yes, sir.
With, to cut down on the confusion in the step process in this, is there any way that, like, maybe you and code enforcement, if the board would, would give y'all the power to move to the next step, to do the finding and stuff? And that would, wouldn't that stop a lot of the confusion and things like that? If, if, because what happens, Dennis exhausts his stuff, then it has to come back to us. If the board gave Dennis more power, then Dennis could go to the next step and start finding these people. Right now he can't, it has to come back to us.
Well, if you go to court, you want your attorney involved, not Dennis. I think the proper way is let Dennis spring on. Do what he's doing. Okay, I've done all I can do, it's up to the town to take care of it.
I agree with that.
Well, he can do that, but I think what Grant is talking about is that actually it come to a point where he can issue a citation. And that is what the fine, and you can set up fines based on steps.
Then we already have fines established.
Yes, sir.
And then if they don't pay the fines, then...
Not for everything. Not for everything, no.
And then if they don't pay the fines, then that's what we turn over to, because the wheelworm took it. But it's, they were given the power, it could move us further down the line.
If you, if the town is able, and it's, is, Dennis is your agent. It's not him doing it just himself, he's doing it because you, you know, he's doing it for you. But where he gives them so much time to clean up a situation, they don't do it and it drags out. Well, then he can go and hand them an actual citation. And you, and this board can determine what the first violation would be and what if it's a, you know, if it's a multi, multi offender, those kinds of things that can make the fines go up. But, um, I'd be glad to, I want the board just to consider it, don't make...
But before you do that, you need to have documentation on how you're gonna go about and what the fines you're gonna be. I'm like...
Yes, sir, that's part of the step.
I must make a motion that, that we allow Ms. Wood to bring something before the board next month and pay her if somebody can come up with a, a dollar amount that we could, uh, go on and bring something to the board so we can look at it and discuss it.
Let me see now, I'm gonna work that motion. My, uh, everybody understands what they were saying, I'm, I'm sure. And we have a second on the floor. Any further discussion?
How much, how much do we want to allow?
Sir, sir, I, I believe it would be her regular hourly wage.
You work it up to higher rate plus putting your proposals for fees.
Yes.
I will look into streamlining the process. Also, one of those steps will be including site and notice of violations, NOVs is what they're called regularly, and citations, and you'll be able to consider what parts of it, yes, sir. And the fines that will be included in that.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Uh, I do have a little bit of discussion and it goes back to state code enforcement. Because we're talking about sending out the letter and him going ahead and doing that, but it's like the cost for sending out these letters, it seems to be a little high. The hours involved, mailed out NOVs for twelve eighty-two South Street and five ninety-three Colridge Road, first class and certified, two hours. I mean, I don't understand why we're being charged two hours to mail out letters for two addresses. So I, I'm concerned with that. Um, if we're gonna go ahead and allow the code enforcement officer to mail out the notices of violations, I don't, I don't understand why we're rebuilding so much for a letter unless they're charging travel time to and from the post office, which could be something that I'm just not aware of.
That might include, uh, you know, the last time that he went out to visit the property.
No, this is under, his assistant, Jane Penix, is billed for dated twelve twenty-seven. And, and actually, on twelve twenty-six, three hours, prepared letters for twelve eighty-two Stout Street and five ninety-three Colridge for approval, updated month reports, one drive and mobile three eleven. And I understand that sometimes working in the software and the computer can take some time, but if the letters were prepared on twelve twenty-six, why did it take two hours to mail them out?
These are not questions I can answer, that's a Dennis Pennix question.
And it's not really something that I can answer for you. And that's where I feel like that there is a little bit of disconnect. And I think Bobby agrees with me, I think she feels it sometimes too. And it's not, it's not Dennis's fault, it's just the fact that there's a little bit of disconnect here.
Could you give us information on that, just send us an email, please.
Yes, I don't wanna give a blanket, he can go ahead and do this, and before you know it, we're being billed all these outward wages just to mail, because they're, I mean, they're kind of expensive there.
Yes, ma'am, but what I'd like to do for you is be able to actually draw the citation out. All that has to be done is fill in the location and document the, the, what is in violation, sign, tear it off and hand it like, like the state trooper will hand you a sheet. Or like that fellow back there, his guys will do for you. So...
Any further discussion? Anybody have a motion? That allow Ms. Wood to go over the paperwork with Dennis and set some fees? Any further discussion? If not, I'll favor the motion, raise your hand.
Yes, sir.
All opposed likewise, motion carries. Thank you, Jill. At this time, we have, uh, mayor and commissioner comments. Any commissioner have any comments at this time?
Uh, the, where are we at on the rail trail?
Where are we at on the rail trail?
Yeah.
Well, we've applied for, uh, uh, funding to finish phase two, which runs from Hardest Creek to Brooklyn Avenue. We've been helping hospital community health foundation for, I believe it was like sixteen thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars, something like four hundred sixty dollars, something like that. And we're waiting on official notification for that.
What is that personal notification?
Be a letter of acceptance for the money. And if you're approved for that, they won't do it. If you get approval, they are requesting to have a newspaper light up before official word is put out in the community if you're approved.
Okay, and, um, what do we need to finish that up?
What do we need? In talking with Kevin Franklin, we have a portion of the rail trail that starts at, uh, I thought, Old Room Factory. That's above that hill. It runs three hundred feet up the rail. That is unknown owners. And I spoke in the past about our attorney doing a quick claim or a quick take. Never asked the board for approval to do so, so he hasn't done so. That is the only property that we do not have control of as far as the rail trail goes. And in my understanding, talking to Kevin Franklin, that we, he thought we already had that easement, I pulled that apart. But apparently we don't. And it's just a three hundred foot space at the very beginning of the trail. And we have easements and deeds where we bought property, we threw away this side to Hardest Creek.
So we're just missing that, whoopie's property?
Yes, sir.
Now, this rail trail goes in two phases, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, we, phase one is complete. Phase two is what we apply for funding for now.
We've been working on it.
And there will be a phase three, which is the bridge across Hardest Creek. We've been working on it for how long? Two thousand and, when, uh, NC Stepoff, two thousand and ten, maybe?
Half and ten.
We've been working on rail trail for eight years, going on nine years. And it's taken us this long to get this far, we've made a lot of progress.
And the last time we brought this up, um, was when? When was the last discussion of the rail trail?
Last month.
And when was the last discussion of the funding? Didn't we vote on this back in August?
I was the thirteenth, twenty eighteen, the board commissioners authorized the mayor to apply for the grant from Renon Hospital Community Health Foundation for around sixteen thousand, I'm saying, four hundred, eight hundred sixty dollars, something like that.
So to finish it out, all we need is that one piece of property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it's been brought to the board's attention that this is owned by a board member?
The what now?
It's been brought to the board that this has been owned, this, this piece of property is owned by a board member.
It's not owned by anyone right yet. There is a board member, I think. As far as I know, it is still unknown owners.
So as far as any grant money goes, we cannot get any grant money until we have possession of this property?
Uh, we can get the grant money, uh, if we're approved. And we have until December this year to complete the project. Now, there is a rail trail committee meeting on January the seventeenth in Ashville that I will be attending. And I'm sure this is going to be brought out about this property.
Well, what do we need to do about this, sir?
Because you're asking me.
Yeah.
What do we need to do about what?
About the possession of this property and get the rail trail finished.
I think at this point, maybe we should, um, consider this as this is a big legal matter, and it should be addressed in closed session.
I would interhand motion we go into closed session for property acquisitions? I would interhand motion we go into executive session for property acquisitions.
I see, like, our first motion amended agenda, I had a closed session.
I would interhand motion that we amend the agenda at this time to include executive session for land acquisition. I saw my. Moving to second, any discussion? If not, I'll favor the motion, raise your hand, I'll oppose likewise. Now, I would interhand motion we go into executive session to discuss land acquisition.
I'll make a motion.
A second?
I'll second.
Moving to seconds, any discussion? I would like to say that I'd have Bobby, our clerk, and our attorney to go with us. Any other discussion? If not, I'll favor the motion, raise your hand, I'll oppose likewise.